The Board of Supervisors meeting for August 1st. And first thing we have is certification of closed meeting.
Do each of you certify that to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in motion at which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board of Supervisors in the closed meeting?
Roll call vote. Mr. Frazier? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
Excellent.
You're welcome. All right, tonight, we have three public hearing items on the agenda. The first one will be the renewal of the Haskell Agricultural and Forestal District. Anyone wishing to speak during this public hearing, if you'll please come up to the mic, tell us your name and your district. And we'll hear from the courtroom first and then move to Zoom if anybody's on Zoom that would like to speak.
Let me just open real quickly by stating that the Haskell Agricultural and Forestal District was first created in 1985. Over the years, it's been renewed since that time for a maximum of 10 years each time. This agricultural and forestal district basically is aligned with all the others in the county and places some restrictions on the land within that district, which are enumerated in the packet and on the screen. And each of the citizens who are landowners who have property in this district were contacted to determine if they want to remain in the district, and there were advertisements placed to determine whether others might be interested. Following that process, the Agriculture and Forestal District Advisory Committee reviewed the proposed ordinance, which is attached and provided with the information that includes these requirements. They provided a recommendation onto the Planning Commission, who held a public hearing, who in turn provided recommendation to the Board that the Board consider and approve the ordinance as provided. Everything was advertised as necessary in accordance with Code of Virginia, Section 1521427, and all of this is in accordance with Code of Virginia 1524307. With that, it would be wonderful to hear from all the citizens here wanting to talk about agricultural and forestal districts.
They have to.
After all that. Anyone wishing to speak?
Good morning, Chairman. We had a comment go long at the 2:00 p.m. meeting. Are we going to impose a request for time limits this evening?
On these particular items?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know that we need to. Anyone disagree?
Well, custom is three to five minutes.
Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone on the Zoom world wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand with regards to the renewal of the Haskell Agriculture and Forestal District only. Not seeing any hands. I'm going to close the public hearing on this item and open it up to the Board.
Chairman, being the Board's representative on the Ag and Forestal District Committee, it was unanimous to recommend this for approval by the Board, and I believe the Planning Commission was after that, but our Planning Commission representatives out of town, so I would say that I would place this in the motion for...
That the ordinance is provided?
The ordinance has provided, yes, sir.
That's motion on seconded.
Give a motion on seconded? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Roll call, please.
Oh, roll call, sorry. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
Excellent.
All right, next one. Krebsor Agricultural and Forestal District.
Very similar to the last item. This, the Krebsor Agricultural and Forestal District was created in 1981, has been renewed several times since that, since then, has the same restrictions as were discussed for Haskell and are, as are presented on the screen. This, too, was advertised in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 1521427 for public hearing, was reviewed by the Forestal District Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission, both with recommendations to the Board for approval of the ordinance as presented.
Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Please be recognized. Not seeing anyone in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom world? All right, not seeing anybody on Zoom. I'm going to close the public hearing. And Mr. Frazier?
Same recommendation, Madam Chair. The Ag and Forestal District recommended approval of this as well in the form as advertised.
Is that a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
Yes.
Well, it went so well the first time, I seconded again.
All right, give a motion on seconded. Any discussion?
I may throw a monkey wrench in at this time.
Oh. Roll call vote. Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I also. All right. Public hearing, GAPTA draft report.
I think most of the people here with us tonight are here for this topic. The Office of Intermodal Investment and Planning had a grant opportunity that was shared with the Board several meetings ago. The Board elected to move forward with an application to receive that funding, so to say, for a study to look at pedestrian or multimodal transportation opportunities in Flint Hill and Sperryville. No funding passed through the county. It was the state consultant that was selected by the state and then assigned to this project. The county then worked through scoping with that consultant and the state. Part of that scope did not allow the consultant to perform any public outreach. I'm not sure why they set the projects up that way. A public outreach is completely left to the county if you want to have some. This is not a required public hearing, but it seemed like it would generate a lot of public interest, and therefore it seemed appropriate to have a public hearing as you are tonight. Attached to this agenda item are two different versions of a report that were prepared by Tool Design, the consultant to the state. One version dated July 15th, and then a second version dated July 28th. That July 28th version incorporates feedback that was received from OIPI and the VDOT representatives. And I've also attached a highlighted changes version that was provided to me by the consultant, although it is not a track changes. I'm not sure how the Board would like to go through this document. I can pull it up on the screen, and we can scroll through it section by section. If you've already reviewed it in detail yourselves, I'm rather confident that the citizens have reviewed it in detail. You can receive citizen input and then perhaps focus in on different sections, whatever the Board's pleasure. There is no formalities on how you do this because it's not a required, whatever works best for your process.
Ms. Smith, given that I believe the majority of the people in the room are from your district, what would you like to see?
Well, I have to say, I'm sort of at a loss because we received a document early that was sort of published and talked about, and then we received this other document on Friday, which contains a lot more information and a lot of changes. And I think we both referenced this in the article that we were asked to comment in for the Rappaport News, that while the study is always interesting to see another perspective, what we really needed was input from VDOT about what may or may not all be involved in executing. And so I think, I don't know if the public has looked at that. There hasn't been a paper published since last Friday, so I think a lot of folks may not have heard about that.
Do I do a quick review?
I mean, it's a lot of detailed changes, and so, I mean, I think tonight we should really concentrate on hearing from the public, but I do think it is problematic that there was no public outreach component, and we will have to be exhaustive in our public outreach. And it's going to be, you know, something that we'll need to work through diligently to see really what people want.
The state originally wanted this project to end on, I think, July 6th, and I said that that won't do. We need to at least have time for the community and the Board to review the draft document, provide feedback, which provided us this extra month or so through early August when the consultant's work will be done. It doesn't mean that we won't have whatever they produce and be able to build on it ourselves in the future, but that's what the state has funded. And for good or bad, that's the process that they provided to us.
And I just know that I've had people even reaching out to me today, you know, wondering what's going on and why there's a changed document, and, you know, asking me, what's the basis for the discussion? And it's a lot to track, but I know that there's a lot of people that have come out tonight and want to speak on it, and so I think we should, we should use it as a hearing. We should be listening and deciding a diligent way forward after much prayerful consideration.
All right, I'm good with that. If everybody else is, we'll open the public hearing for the GAPTA draft report. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized. Say your name and district when you come up to the mic.
Scott McBride, Piedmont District. I just heard about this thing this morning. Pretty sad. You want to bring this up on the screen? So while they're looking for that, it's really only one detail that I object to. I'm all for the idea of traffic calming. I think that's great. I would love to have a sidewalk going from the church down to the center of town. That's a very dangerous situation, especially when they had that Sperry Fest thing. People were just walking in the road. I mean, traffic couldn't even get by, so that would be good.
We're going to need you to speak into the mic or people won't hear you. Sorry.
All right. Well, that's my house on the corner there, and they show a parking area along the edge of the lane to the sewer plant. And it seems unnecessary to me because on the other side of that lane, the land is level, but on our side, it's cut like a ditch, and it actually, it's cut, it got all the way down to the river and drains water. And I don't know how Cliff feels about people parking on the other side of the lane, between the lane and the fence, but, I mean, during that Sperry Fest thing, people just pulled into Cliff's property and parked in there. It really wasn't a problem because they were only there for a day. But, so that, that would be my opinion. I don't know if they're into a hard skate there or what that is.
Yeah. I don't know how the Board wants to handle...
I think this is one of the situations where we probably should answer people's questions if we could.
Yeah. I would just say this is very high-level conceptual work, and the consultant has identified that area for parking. There's no concept of whether it would be hard surface or what the material would be, and quite frankly, if parking on the other side of the eastbound back to the water sewer plant made more sense, then that might happen. There's a lot of design that would happen between now and then, and would be based off of feedback like is being received right now.
Thank you, Scott. Jump in the back.
Hi, good evening. Yerica Taylor, Piedmont District as well.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Yerica Taylor, Piedmont District as well. Just wanted to say, we've come here, my wife and I, to express strong support for the conceptual idea of traffic calming and offering more pedestrian facilities. Our property is right of Atkins Road, so we're very much interested in having a sidewalk going to, going to the village. One of the things that attracted us to, to that location where we, where we have our house is precisely the proximity to the village and the ability to enjoy, enjoy the village and enjoy, enjoy, enjoy the area without the need to use automobile, without the need to, it's essentially another, another way to take another car off the road. It's, and we're hoping that other residents would be in a similar situation and would definitely appreciate something that would allow us to do so and continue doing so in a, in a more, in a more and safer manner. So again, just wanted to reiterate, great support for the conceptual idea without going into details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Bob Trafton, Piedmont District. I also want to voice my support for the, for this plan, or a plan, not necessarily this plan. I like a lot of aspects of this, the sidewalks, the pedestrian access, the traffic calming, some of those aspects. I do walk downtown Sperryville frequently, and I find the sidewalks a bit narrow. I often step off the sidewalk whenever a vehicle's coming because a truck with a wide mirror could easily hit you because it's very close. And I also walk up to, say, B&amp;B, Napa Auto Parts occasionally and just walking through the grass. So a sidewalk in that area would be very beneficial to myself.
Thank you.
I'm in support.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Lassard. I'm a Piedmont District resident, and my wife and I wrote a note today to the Board in support, in general support of this plan. We understand there's devils in the details. I actually have the old report, not the 28th, which talked about more specifics, but at the same time, I do think it's a, it's a great idea. It would enhance Sperryville and Flint Hill. I think we should put a stop sign right in front of your restaurant. That would, that would, that would slow the traffic down even more, maybe a three-way stop.
Yep.
But, and I do like the other things in the plan. I agree with, on the wastewater plant road, I was on the sewer board, as you, as you know, for eight years, and, and Mr. McBride is correct that it is a ditch between the road, the existing road and his property. So what they're planning is not really going to be feasible, plus the way it looks is you would have to actually go all the way down the end of the sewer road, turn around to actually park on that side if you were going to parallel park. I like the idea of a, of the trail, one of the trailheads starting there and being able to be, to get there from downtown Sperryville, as the case may be, along a sidewalk that's existing. So I hope that, that you all will support this, just like you supported the last two issues that came up unanimously, to go forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir.
I'm Tony Van Acker from Stonewall Hawthorne. I don't live in Sperryville, but I am, I do work and help with the Sperryville Trail Committee, and I enjoy walking the trails and enjoying Sperryville with my grandchildren when they come to town. I fully support the, the idea of the study that was put, put out, and thank you very much, Christine, for getting that thing launched. I think that there's, it has a lot of value in providing good ideas for the, the future pedestrian-friendly nature of Sperryville, which I, I think is something we should strive for. It's already started with Trail Network that's in place, and this would just facilitate it. I did submit my comments to Gary Curry on the, on the 28th document as well as the 15th document, and there are some subtle changes, one of which is they soften their stance on the full stop, the three-way stop at the corner store, which I would prefer to see remain as a full three-way stop because I've had some challenges navigating that corner myself, and I think other traffic calming issues that they, solutions that they propose may encroach on property at that intersection that is not necessary. Some of the other things I noticed in the study, they, they showed two crosswalks near Shaw's Garage, one crossing 211 and one crossing 522. I think that could be simplified by one simple crossing further east on 211 and going straight to the grassy area by the Headmaster's Pub and rejoining a trail that already exists. And I made that kind of proposal. Let's see, what else did I mention? Oh, the parking that the gentleman, first gentleman pointed out. I don't think there's really any need for having parking at that spot. It's, people can walk, it's meant to be a pedestrian trail on a sidewalk, and people can park elsewhere, and they don't need to park at the trailhead, so that can be just deleted from scope. There is a reference to the trail or the side, trail going all the way up to the Miller property entrance, and I think the way they described that incorrectly, it really goes to the, to the sewer access road.
The DVO say, eat road is an eastbound on the Miller property.
Okay.
So I guess that's the confusion.
It would be clearer if it just said the sewer access road.
Yeah, probably.
And the other, the comment I have is, they're proposing to redo the intersection of 211 and Water Street and maybe redo the bridge and make that a T connection as opposed to a, an angled connection as it is now.
Main Street.
Main Street.
Main Street.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I'll learn to town yet. They're making a mention of not turning, making a left turn from that road, and I think that would be mighty inconvenient for people and really an unnecessary restriction. There should be enough visibility to allow left-hand turns if it was a T connection. That's all my comments. I just fully support this thing going forward. Take the comments, improve the draft, it'll be a good planning document for the community as we go forward.
I did pass your documents both on to the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Barbara Adolphy. I don't have a speech planned, but I just want to tell you that as a member of this community, the efforts that the Sperryville Alliance has put into making our community more accessible to everybody has been wonderful. I sit on my front porch right there on Water Street, and the people going up and down that trail, grandparents with their grandkids, good people with their dogs. I always tell them, Tank, the dog from Gordon and Susan is in the water because he makes the most noise. It's wonderful to see people really active in the community and having a place to go that's so peaceful, and get to meet a lot of our neighbors in a more peaceful way. I know this has, there are a lot of issues and points to be spworked out, but the concept of it I fully believe in because what we are is a community. Not that we don't have the same ideas, we have few different ideas, but the community is people who want to live together, get along together, communicate with each other. Maybe you want to see me, maybe you don't, but I'm here, and I'll be here as long as I can. So I support this because it builds community, builds relationships, sense of belonging. You know, the older you get, I'm two weeks away from turning 80, the older you get, the more you need people, and it's so nice to have people walking. That's it.
Hi, Carrie Sutton in Piedmont District. First, I want to thank you for doing the study. Many of you know I'm a big fan of study, getting data and understanding what the shortfalls were and getting experts to tell us that. So I think that's important. I 100% agree with Christine that we need community input. That's an important part of anything that you do in a community, so I encourage that, that step once we get beyond the final report. On the theme of studies, many of you know that we actually conducted, the Alliance conducted a study of Sperryville in 2020. We interviewed, we got survey responses from 220 people, 221 people, asking them a number of questions. One of those questions was what were the amenities they most wanted in Sperryville? The number one priority or amenity that people wanted were sidewalks, speed calming, traffic calming, and street skate. So there is, there is a little bit of research that suggests that the community wants these activities, or they want sidewalks, they want it to be a friendlier city. We followed up that survey with a number of focus groups. They were fascinating focus groups. We had about 80 people through six different focus groups. We had a group of seniors, we had a group of kids, we had a group of families, business leaders. Generally, they're, the major theme you heard from them was they wanted Sperryville to be a community, have a sense of community, an ability to get around and walk around. One of the most fascinating, one of, one of the sessions was held at Kathy and Fred Eggers' house on Thornton Gap Church Road. It was the first one we did, and it was the most fascinating because we had a lot of seniors there. In fact, my good friend Carolyn was there with us, Margaret Ann Whalen was there, Lily and Ailer, Charlotte Jenkins.
Eileen.
Eileen Johnson was there. Fascinating discussion. We did it in their front yards because COVID was in, and we had a beautiful view while we were doing it. But one of the things they, one of the many topics they talked about was that kind of loss of a sense of community. And let me just read to you a couple of things that they actually said during that meeting. A number of these folks spoke fondly of their years in Sperryville. They said in their early years, everybody knew each other, and going to the commercial portion of Sperryville was a fun experience with multiple grocery stores and service stations. They said walking about in Sperryville elicited a lot of waves, particularly from longstanding residents, homeowners, and homeowners from the front porch. They then decried the fact that the waves don't come as often as they used to. They were unanimous, they, there was unanimous concern for pedestrian safety, traffic, and speeding, with several mentioning that their walks in, in the community now were less scary than they used to be. That's where this study becomes really important. I will tell you, this study is not so much about sidewalks and, it's calling for sidewalks and crosswalks and things, but this study really is about making Sperryville a community again. It's about getting people out on the road, on the sidewalk, saying hi to one another again. It is not an economic development tool, it's not about bringing tourists here. In fact, the purpose of this document is actually to slow truckers and traffic, slow truckers and tourists down in Sperryville and let us gain control of our streets again. So I wholeheartedly support most of these recommendations. I've sent you all a letter describing where I supported things, where I had some concerns, such as the Main Street entrance. But the point of this is actually to allow Jen Cable to run up and down 211 like she does on a regular basis, or me to walk down to Johnny Jenkins and buy tomatoes rather than having to drive down. Nanon Kirchman, who works for me, I saw her walking home across that Main Street Bridge and on 211, it's simply dangerous. Some of my other neighbors, Joel and Judy, who actually walk frequently around Sperryville, need safe spaces to walk. So I encourage you to, to engage this discussion, think about how we can make Sperryville a friendlier place again. I do want to say one thing about funding because this topic comes up a lot. I spent 30 years in government doing budgets. As many of you know, Congress passed one of the largest infrastructure bills we've ever had. That money has been appropriated and is being distributed to the states. That money will be spent. It is on us if we decide to invest in our community or if we let Loray take our money and invest in their community. So I, I encourage us to find our path forward and to begin to seek those grants to actually pay for this work. It's important work, and I think it'd be great for our community. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Carrie.
Hi, Tak Takaleski, Piedmont, also on Thornton Gap Church Road in Sperryville, speaking in support of, first want to thank you for doing the study and support for most of the things, and specifically, as Carrie just mentioned, my neighbors, the Kirchmans and many of the other people on my road, live close enough to the village to walk to it, and that bridge on the west side where Main Street meets 211 is the most terrifying part of the walk. So I was excited to see that in there, and I encourage you to, to consider that, that spot in particular. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since everybody's talking about the Kirchmans, Dabney Kirchman, Piedmont District, obviously, and I, as well as my daughter, walked down from Thornton Gap Church Road and crossed the street, and kindly, the neighbors let us walk in their yard so we're not in 211 getting run over, but when you're making that cross over to Main Street, it is absolutely terrifying, and you're looking at people coming off the mountains and motorcycles coming, and you're just praying a little bit, and it would be wonderful. I, I also am, I'm, I, I don't know the detail, I read it, the details can be worked out, but it would be just wonderful to have this speed limit 25 through the whole freaking area and sidewalks that you could walk on without fear of your life, whether you're walking your dog, getting exercise, or going to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ray Bach. I'm from Sperryville, Piedmont. I just want to speak to the bridge on Main Street. You know, we're all concerned about flooding, as it's occurred in Kentucky recently. That could happen here, too. And one of the, one of the problems with flooding is when you have a bridge like the one on Main Street with the center column, there's a log there right now that's caught up against that column, and that's the beginning of a debris jam which could back up water, what is it, west of Main Street and up to, you know, and I don't know if you remember, two years ago, three years ago, we had that two or three inches in one hour, and water was over 211. Would be much worse if some of that debris piled up there. So I'm speaking also from the experience as an engineer... So I'm speaking also from the experience as an engineer who worked in flood control. So that's, that's an important thing. There's a few trees in the, in the stream downstream that should be cleared up too, just north of the five twenty-two bridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Judy Cress and I'm here to comment about the walking trail in Sperryville, the whole issue. You know, twenty-five pages, a lot of information. And for us to be able to decipher all that this evening, I had heard today that the best thing we could do would be to send it to the Planning Commission. Is that the thing? Is that a possibility?
I mean, I'm going to comment here and getting into too much question answer is a slippery slope. But the Planning Commission is one of the options. I think it would be remiss of us to send it down without doing some public outreach of our own. And I mean, I don't want to skip to the ending, but I was thinking we should, you know, kind of work in pairs along with our Planning Commission representative and do public listening sessions.
Well, I hear a lot of like, okay, this is not the real deal. This is not what we're going to finally have a final paper. So, you know, we need to know exactly what we're signing up for before we do, you know. And I'm glad this gentleman back here knows us for walking. My husband and I walk all the time. I'm not so sure why everyone, yes, there's a lot of traffic, but I do know to wait for that traffic to go by. So, you know, we have never, I haven't been frightened walking on the highway. We walk up two eleven, back up Estes Mill Road, back Woodward Road, down Main Street, two eleven, back the old holla, whatever, you know. So I'm not all that concerned. I am concerned with talk on the bridge there and not allowing people to be able to turn right. We have people that come down two eleven now. We live right on two eleven there, right beside Thornton Gap Church Road. Whether it's the GPS directing the people and they miss the turn down Main Street, what do they do? They come down and they make a U-turn in front of our house. So I'm thinking, okay, you don't allow people to turn right? We will have that continuously and you want to put a sidewalk up in front of my house? Just, you know, for what? What is the purpose of the sidewalk up to Atkins Road?
Well, I have to say, and this is one of the pitfalls of having somebody do a study that doesn't have any public interaction. And I, and I do understand your frustration because even as a public official, I had to be hands-off as well. And so, you know, there were a lot of things that I read in the study that I thought, well, that won't fly. But I may know that and you may know that, but part of the process is, is working through those details.
Right.
So I, I do hear your frustration and share your frustration that we received an early working document, which to my mind contained a lot of language that was not really appropriate for a recommendations document. And then we received language from VDOT that got in a lot of conditions and was, as you said, a lot of dense reading. And I'm still not concerned, I'm still not convinced that all of the situations that present difficulties are represented in the document because it had no local buy-in when it was crafted. So I, I hear you and I, I share a lot of your concerns.
So at the bridge there in Sperryville, is there consideration for one of the RRFB crossing lights or whatever?
Well, I mean, I think you're, when I read about RRFB crossing lights and it, it, these are board decisions and we should seek a lot of public input. But I do know when I see those lights, they're in very urban areas. And we've had flashing lights before in the village. And people didn't like them and we ended up taking them down. Because they weren't a fit for our rural character.
So that's just a flashing light, not necessarily someone who wants to cross the street, that they hit a button?
It's normally that somebody would hit a button and then it would flash and then someone could cross the street, like you see on the UVA campus, that sort of thing.
Well, I can see that in a rural place, but if you, I sit on my porch every day and see traffic on two eleven and in the fall, how many people are going to push that button and want to cross that road for tra? You're going to back up traffic, it's bad enough as it is, but you're going to back it up for miles up the road. So, you know, I think there's a lot of things that need to be considered. Yeah, wonderful, it's nice to get out and walk and all of those things, but there's a lot of other issues that are in this proposal that, you know, really need to be considered, other than just a walking trail.
Thank you Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel Cress, I'm also Piedmont District. I just want to add to what my wife has spoken. We live in one one nine seven nine the highway, so we are directly beside Thornton Gap Church Road and Ryan's Road, one on either side. So that's what she is speaking of when she talks about the U-turns that we have. We have at least a couple a day, coming both ways. I mean, people will miss the turn going on five twenty-two or they'll miss Main Street. Their GPS complains they missed their turn. And they must stop in front of our house prior to the point that it says recalculate and complete the triangle. So they're not able to think about that, they don't see on their nav system. In other words, we have that situation happening quite often. I see any type of left turn restriction complicating that situation. I'm also very concerned about the fact that even though we would like to see twenty-five mile per hour restriction, they're not going forty-five as it is. They have open road from Clevenger's Corner to Sperryville. And once they hit the end of that four lane, they're still barreling on down the road. And I really don't see twenty-five miles per hour helping. And, and are these restricted crossings, I would not feel any safer with that. It might help my survivors win a lawsuit, but it's not going to help me feel safer crossing because to be quite honest, I would not trust anyone to actually stop. We already have a state law that says they should be stopping at our crosswalks and we have to be very careful when we do have the couple that we have, people have not been stopping. Or when they do stop, we're trying to weigh them on because there's other traffic that's just not going to stop. And so I, I don't know the signals are going to help. We need to be very careful, especially with Route two eleven. I've seen there, we've been there, we, we've been in the county for thirty years. My wife's family's been here for over a hundred. So we're residents of this county. We've seen it change. We've seen the traffic density increase significantly over the years. And where we are living now, since we've been since twenty thirteen, we've been there, my father-in-law lived there before then, we've watched the traffic increase, a lot of commuter traffic. But I will say, and I'll add, like my wife said, even though traffic has increased, we have not really personally felt any safety issue. We walk all the way to Estes Mill Road and we've normally had a good experience. People will pass by, they'll, they'll get over, we'll wave, they'll wave back. We are very well off with, you know, walking up. We've never had an instance at this point where we have felt unsafe. Now, crossing the bridge, I'll agree with all the others, when we cross the bridge on Main Street, we have to scoot on across. But to bring it to close, I would say the cheapest way, and I know business owners won't like this, but if you want to solve the traffic problem on Main Street, remove that bridge altogether, puts you a barricade there and that will stop all the traffic problem. I find that what we typically have going up and down Main Street are RVs. We have twenty-foot trailers going up through there. A lot of through traffic on Main Street would stop. GPS routing problems would stop, U-turns in our front yard would stop if you just simply took the bridge out. We can put a little park there for everybody. We have little platforms so we can put our bands and they can play and whatever, you know, benches on the river maybe. But to, actually, if you want to fix that problem, that's what I'd say would be the cheapest solution, just remove the bridge altogether. But I know people don't want that and I get the feeling we want to connect two eleven to Main Street for business reasons. And just be upfront with us as taxpayers, as county people, that's what the issue really is. But if it's traffic control or pedestrian safety, I'm not sure that this plan is really addressing that and needs more study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Patricia Brennan, I'm a Piedmont resident. I have a business in Sperryville and I also live in, outside of Sperryville for forty-one years now. And my business is Thornton River Art and I employ you to come and sit on my porch and see how fast traffic goes by every single day. And I worry about people trying to get to my shop. Because if you step out of that sidewalk, you are in the road. It is, Carrie's building's already been hit twice. I, I don't know about all the other plans and all the other parts of the detail of, of this study, but I do know that somehow we have to slow the traffic down on Main Street before someone gets hit. Because it's, it's inevitable and I would hate for that to be a liability and nobody did anything about it. So I don't know what the answer is, but I'm so happy for this study. I'm so grateful for you to be able to consider a solution because there's definitely needs to be a solution to this problem. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Betty.
Robin Day, Piedmont. Just kind of stand here and agree with everyone, but I just, you know, want to get up here and let my voice be heard. But I'm all for this Main Street traffic. I walk it every morning, you can set your watch, nine oh five, I'm headed for Before and After. And my dog wanders and she will step out into the street. I mean, I could blindfold myself and she'll take the left-hand turn to go into the little alley for Before and After. She knows that, but if a car is coming, and they do come fast. And I've thought to myself, how can I slow them down? I've thought about, you know, dodging out in front of them or pretending to, to make them slam on their brakes, but something has to be done about the twenty-five. And I just want to comment about that bridge. I mean, sort of like you close that bridge and they'll be U-turning in front of my house, okay? When they can't get across that bridge. But, I mean, it's one thing to say, well, that won't work, that won't work, that won't work. If we're going to get up here, let's, if we don't like that idea, let's give ideas what will, rather than saying, well, you know. And also, if you close the bridge, they're still going to miss the other turn and they're going to make that U-turn and fire at your house again. So, you know, I mean, I think that's the nature of the beast in highway travel. You miss a turn, you turn around. You don't think about how many times, you know, someone has backed into your yard, you know, or you're going into someone's yard. It just happens. But anyway, I'm just letting my voice be heard in support of Sperryville's speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Fran Krebser from Wakefield and I agree with all of the suggestions that have come in tonight. But I'm so glad you're going to look at something for Wake, for Wakefield and Flint Hill. Those people come through Flint Hill like crazy, tractor trailers, cars. It is really frightening and there have been several accidents there. I really appreciate all the work you all do and I hope you continue to look out for the safety of Rappahannock citizens because we really do need to fix both these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Tommy Atkins, Jackson District, but I also was born and raised in Sperryville. And I continue to have a house in Sperryville and I have property in Sperryville, in the village. And I have a lot of history with Sperryville. I go back to nineteen forty-six when I was born there. I was born and raised in Sperryville, Virginia. And I migrated to Ambersfield. But this, this study is a good study, but there's a lot of things that needs to really be looked at. There's a lot of devil in the details of this, this report. This, except the fact that this report mainly is dealing with the businesses of Sperryville. Back when I was raised in Sperryville, every house or every building in there had a family in it. It was no business in there. There was three stores. There was Jimmy and Mutt Atkins Store, there was Ed Astor Store, in the corner store was owned by, I forget the name of the, the people.
Schwartz.
Schwartz, correct. And we walked the streets of Sperryville to go to school. They came out of, they even came out of Woodward Road. We all joined and walked down to the ones of us that was going to Sperryville Elementary School, one through seven, we walked to school. We didn't have a problem, yeah, there was less traffic back then, but we didn't have a problem with being hit. I never heard of a case of anybody being hit in the village of Sperryville, the students walking to school. But there were students back then, there was families. The teachers at the Sperryville School, Ms. Delahit, Ms. Moffett, the second grade teacher, lived in Sperryville. They had a home in Sperryville. They didn't have to come from Luray or they didn't have to come from Front Row or somewhere to come in here to teach. They had a, they had a home in the village of Sperryville. And that, that is all gone away. I know history, you know, history moves on, things change. But, you know, the street, Main Street has been paid, recently paid, nice job. Yes, somebody is going to say that increases the speed limit. There is a way to decrease that speed limit. Speed cameras will stop it. Speed cameras will stop it. When you start, and you don't have to have a person there to, to write, have that ticket sent to them. It gets their tag and it gets mailed to them. You don't have to have, you don't have to have a deputy there to do it. It can be done. Look at DC, look at the millions of dollars that they, they rake in of speed, speed, speed cameras. So that is a way. And there are other com, traffic calming methods that can be applied. You know, you have areas in the metropolitan areas, Fairfax, Prince William, Manassas, Loudon, Arlington. I've worked there for thirty-five years. I know a little bit about the traffic. So there are other traffic calming methods that can be applied. And we just need to look at it, study and work with that. But I, I do think you've got a, you've got a long-term plan here to work with. But I don't think it needs to be the most critical thing to be worked on in this county at this present time. I don't think it's the most critical thing. Housing for our people is one of the most critical things needed in this county. Housing. I don't know how you want to talk about affordable housing, whatever you want to call it. But we need to have changes made in this county that the people, families can be raised in this county and they can achieve their dream of owning a little piece of property in God's country. Rappahannock County is God's country. They can own a little piece of property and have a home on it. And they can raise their family in the area that they was born and raised in. That to me is one of the top priorities in this county that needs to be worked on. Thank you for listening and I know you all have a difficult job, I understand it. And I appreciate everything you do to help the people in this county.
Thank you Tommy.
Thanks Tommy.
Remind us, the speed cameras can't be used in.
Yeah, Code of Virginia does not allow counties to deploy speed cameras unless it's in a construction zone or a school speed zone. And that's only recently been allowed the last couple of years. But some cities probably, it's different rules.
Did I just say my whole name?
Sure.
We also, since Main Street in Sperryville is strictly business, is mainly business, we could do like the Old Town Warden and block it off. You know, they got their, they got their Etervish right out in the street. You know, they got their, they got their Eaterfish right out in the street. So you could do that. Old Town Wartung does it. And it works very well.
Thank you. Any else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lauren Taylor, Piedmont District. My husband Yurka spoke earlier. We're relatively new to the area. We live just off Atkins Road. One constant that we've heard throughout the evening is that congestion is a problem. And one way to address that would make it less, would be to make it less necessary to use a vehicle to access the village. My husband and I walk into the village all the time. It's one of the reasons we bought our home. Walkability is really important to us. The times when we do use a car to get into the village would be when it's after dark or there's inclement weather, and we don't feel very safe crossing. If we were to have sidewalks and a lower speed limit, we would be able to rely on our car even less than we do now. And that's something that we would really appreciate, and we encourage you to consider. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Bruce, Berryville. I am in favor of everything that we've heard here tonight, everything that's in the plan. I think it'll be very difficult to execute a lot of it. Maybe some of it's unnecessary. But something needs to be done to get started, and this is the way to start. The thing that I think could be done goes beyond the plan, but I think it could be done fairly easily, and that is to reduce the speed limits in town and to find a way to enforce them. If you turn at the corner store and head towards Sperryville, almost immediately, there's a sign that says 25 miles per hour. But when you make that left turn and head towards Culpeper, there are so many other things going on that basically you don't see that 25 mile per hour sign. That sign should be moved down to maybe the Methodist Church. So once a car gets straightened out and ready to go, all of a sudden, there's a sign, and you see the speed limit. Another thing that needs to happen on that section of road, I believe, is to get rid of the passing lines. In, starting in front of the Baptist church is a passing line heading east towards the cemetery. And what happens if a person is going through there at 25 miles an hour? Everybody else speeds up and passes and takes off and hauls up the hill. Coming into Sperryville from the Culpeper direction, there is a passing line. Same thing. Way back beyond the Route 231 turn, there's a sign that says 45 miles per hour. That's coming from Culpeper towards Sperryville. Before you get to 231, there's a sign that says 45 miles per hour. Well, they're usually doing 65. Then there's another sign that says 45 miles per hour. Then there's one that says it's going to be 25. And then there's one that says 25. Makes no difference. They don't see it. There's a passing lane. I have been coming down that section of road, getting ready to make a left turn into my house, and I have been passed by a car behind me more than once. And not when the, not when the center line is in their favor, but when the center line is pointing in the opposite direction. I don't know why they're in such a hurry, but they are. And so I walk a lot in Sperryville. It's quite dangerous. I step off into the grass when cars go by. Sometimes I do this, but it's really hard to slow down the traffic. One of the things that I have been told by law enforcement is they don't typically give a speeding ticket unless you're doing more than 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. So if the speed limit's 25, they're not going to give a ticket unless you're doing 35 or more. In front of my house, there's a sign that says 45. They see that sign all the way back at the Methodist church. All they see is a field, open space. And usually, they're doing 65 when they cross in front of my house. Now, nobody's been hurt, you know, I don't step out there in front of them. But it's enforcement. How are we going to enforce it? And I agree with what Tommy said about some kind of speed camera, although I don't think we can do that in Virginia. But we have, or they have, from time to time, put those cameras up that show you how fast you're going. And when they have been installed, we can see the difference. People slow down. I think their cars are so powerful, they're quiet, you don't realize how fast you're going. So somehow, I'd like to see some way to enforce the speed limits that we do have. And thank you for working on this, and let's all get together and get it done. Thank you.
Mary Catherine Ishi, Sperryville, Piedmont. I'm sort of in a listening mode on this study at the moment. There's a lot in there, and it's important to hear what, you know, my neighbors think about this. But I will say, in Woodville, which is a smaller area than Sperryville even, I slow down every single time I hit that area, because I know there is a policeman sitting in the corner of the church lot, and he catches every single person that goes there. And one of the studies, psychological studies they do on law enforcement says that the amount of the penalty or the severity of the penalty is not as important as knowing you're going to get the penalty. So you can have the death penalty, but if it's only applied once every 300 years, nobody pays attention to it. But if you get a slap on the wrist, but you know you're going to get that slap on the wrist every single time, that's an incentive not to do it. So I agree with many, many of the things that folks have said, but enforcement is probably going to be a big key. Thank you.
Anyone else in the courtroom? Seeing none, I do know we've got some folks on Zoom, including Mr. Moni from the Rappahannock Rapid, Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission. Anybody wishing to speak with regards to this public hearing item, please raise your Zoom hand.
Just in case people don't know how, I'm going to go ahead and let them unmute.
One last time, anybody on Zoom wishing to speak? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, 7:58, and open it up to the board.
Well, I guess I have several questions, Madam Chair. But funding, when you see the price range here, it's a considerable difference in funding. And I just wonder, you know, is it some type of 20%, 20%, 80% split? Or what would be expected of us? Does anybody have any information there?
The, these sorts of projects would be likely fundable through the TAP program that the board is familiar with. As was referenced today, the various pandemic relief infrastructure bills have significantly sweetened the pot on those grants over the next four or five years, from about 850 million a year to 1.4 million? No, 850 billion? I don't know. Big numbers. I have the paper somewhere.
You got the right number of zeros, there, Gary?
Right numbers, wrong number of zeros.
I would worry too much about it.
Yeah.
But also, I mean, there's just so much...
But that's 820.
Yeah, 820. And if the county has to come up with that 20%, I just wonder if we would do a special tax district. I mean, these are not questions we would resolve tonight, but if Sperryville businesses want these improvements, it's not unheard of, even in Rappahannock County, to do a special tax district, where the businesses pay higher taxes for a certain period of time. But, I mean, there's that that we could discuss. But I'm just wondering, you know, unfortunately, I didn't grow up here, but I, we came back a lot and visited because my father's side of the family's from Sperryville. And I also worked on 66th Extension from Gainesville to 81. I remember when there was a lot of traffic that came through Rappahannock, because it, it didn't have any other way to go back in those days. So I just wonder what the traffic counts are now compared to those days when Mr. Atkins stated that, you know, people walked everywhere. I, I just don't know. There just seems like there's a lot of information that we don't have. And I think that we, we just need to, you know, continue gathering information. This is, this is a study without a lot of input, it appears. Nobody asked me, but yet I read in here, "We're Sperryville, wants XYZ." How did they get that information? Ms. Smith said that she didn't have much input into it, or any.
I didn't have any input. I was told it was a third-party study.
Yeah, if they didn't talk to anybody in Sperryville for public input, how did they find out that Sperryville wanted to be a walking neighborhood? Who told these people that?
I think they had access to the, the Sperryville Community Alliance studies that were performed. I imagine they gathered it from that.
They're not an official public group.
Well, I understand your point. I don't think a group needs to be official to express the interest of a community. But it is one voice among many voices.
No, I think they would have to be.
Well, I guess the two of us disagree on that point. But it's, it's a voice among voices that this board has to...
It's a voice among voices, but it's not an official voice.
I don't disagree with that.
You do, or you don't?
I do not disagree that many voices need to be heard and considered.
Right, right.
And that's where this board assimilates all of that information to try to, you know, decide what is...
I'm not trying to be a bad guy here. I try to sit up here and look aggravated at everybody to speak. I hope I did a good job doing that, you know. I try not to pick favorites. So the thing is, if you're talking about spending public money, I don't think the people of Chester Gap or Amosville should be paying for sidewalks in Sperryville. Doesn't benefit us. I have a couple of businesses that I attend to visiting Sperryville, but I drive there, I get in my truck or car, and I drive right back to Amosville, or maybe I stop on the way over the mountain or something. But I don't walk anywhere in Sperryville. Not that I don't like it. I just have no use for it. And there's going to be a lot of taxpayers in the county that have the same feelings I have. As a matter of fact, they've already been expressed to me that it's not so much they don't care what they do in Flint Hill or Amosville, I mean, Sperryville, they just don't want to pay for it. And I think that's a fair, fair position to take. So I, I think that we need to be on an information gathering tour, if you will, and maybe, maybe schedule something with the Planning Commission. But this is planning. Unfortunately, to me, it looks like urban planning in a rural area. And I really think that the Planning Commission should be involved in it at some point in time, very soon, before we spend a lot of time on it ourselves.
When do they complete the study? Mid-August, you say? Or are they finalized?
Their scope through the state ends, I believe, on the 8th or something like that. Doesn't mean that you don't pick this up and do whatever you want with it, whether you use Tool Design or some other group.
But I imagine that if we fed them or gave them feedback, they would incorporate that into their final product?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, VDOT has already said they don't want to drop the speed limit. We've asked them several times about that.
Right.
They said their own internal studies say that they shouldn't drop the speed limit.
And that's based on the conditions on the ground. And so as VDOT's input into the 28th report makes clear, and as I noted to a few, that the speed limits on the roads are consistent with the pedestrian accommodations on the road. And so if you have a sidewalk and crosswalks, then that affects the speed limit analysis and what appropriate speed limit is in place.
But crosswalks, I was on Ead Street in Arlington not too long ago. It's probably been three years ago, because the vehicle that I was driving has been off the road for about two years. But we had pedestrians in a crosswalk, and I stopped. I stopped for those pedestrians in a crosswalk. And a, and a black Mercedes Benz behind me was blowing the horn. So I had two choices, either, you know, obey what I thought was the law and stop for pedestrians in a crosswalk, or bowl them over. And it made me so aggravated that I drove straight from there back to Warrington to the DMV and went in and got the driver's manual and looked at it. This is pre-COVID. And sure enough, it's still in there. Stopped for pedestrians in crosswalks. But the crosswalks don't mean nothing to certain people. And I've said this before, as long as DMV keeps giving driver's licenses out to stupid people, none of this is going to help. That's where the problem exists, is you have stupid people driving cars. But I'm not going to say that in public.
Well, and I just, I, I want to kind of dovetail into some of the things that have been said this evening. And I would like to hear from Mr. Moni about the methodology and input for the study. But I, I do think, you know, it is, it is how do you affect human behavior? That's the, that's the question to, to answer. I don't, I think a lot of the things in this study will create a lot of visual clutter. And there's already a lot of visual clutter in the village. I'll always, already a lot of signs telling people what to do, but they don't necessarily do what the signs tell them to do. And we see that with tractor trailers that end up in the village where they don't belong, people that don't slow down, people that pass when there's no lines on their side for a passing lane. So how do you affect human behavior in, in ways that will work? And I, I don't know if everyone here tonight is aware, but the board did move and unanimously support speed display signs in both Flint Hill and Sperryville last November. And we're waiting for staff to conclude where those are viable and oversee their installation, because that is a very effective way to control behavior.
Is Woodville, Woodville's too?
Possibly Woodville. And they generally lower speeds, they're very effective, by five to 10 miles an hour, when there's that reminder that this is what the speed limit, and this is what you're doing. The other beauty of those speed displays is while it's not issuing tickets, they do have a way to collect the data that they are telling folks at the same time. So over time, we can build, you know, a data set that will show this is the behavior in that area, and, and it really needs to be improved. How do we improve that behavior? So I do think it's incredibly unfortunate that there's not headway on that and that we need to set a deadline on that. We approved it last November. I wish it was done already. I know we've had some back and forth about this because our VDOT representative was here at the 2:00 PM meeting. But to me, that's a valuable, valuable tool that now we don't have. We're coming up onto another season where we'll be exceptionally busy. We're already busier. We see it in our receipts every month for meals and lodging, taxes and sales tax. So we know that businesses are very busy, and there is a lot of traffic. And we're heading into a fall. And what's the timeline where we feel we can accomplish getting those in place, Gary?
I was trying to think back what the action was. I think I was empowered to work with VDOT to identify the locations and bring them back to the board for consideration and of ultimate approval. But as we discussed earlier, it's a function of priorities. And if this is the board's top priority, then you can make that be known, and we'll shuffle the deck and make sure that this is the top priority. And other things will wait for this to be done as opposed to the other way around.
What are the other things on the list?
I sent you, the board, a list of, I think, 30-some-odd items that are queued and ready to be done, and this is one of them. I don't have that at my instant recall.
Well, I mean, I'd like to see it done by mid-October at the latest. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it.
Well, I think that in terms of the study, I think that we can all agree that we have, we have a traffic problem, because we have a beautiful county, and we have the national park right next to us, and we have a lot of folks coming out here. And I think that this has identified some things that I think a lot of folks would just absolutely love. I think sidewalks are a net plus anywhere in any community, and they're, they address safety issues. I think if we can start to address some speed calming, if we can, if we can kind of try to lower the temperature on how fast people are driving through Sperryville, I think we're going to make a huge, huge improvement. Because my prediction is that it's just going to be more and more and more cars. And whether they're even stopping in Sperryville or just going through it to the park is just something that perhaps we don't even, you know, is just going to happen. This is a big study, and I think it's a, a good start. And I think that... And I think that, I think it would be useful, since they're going to conclude this on August 8th, that if there is something that we would like to be added, put in, taken out in terms of what we can discuss here tonight, that we should take advantage of that. I'm not sure if that, if we give them feedback, if they get back to us or what the timeline is on that. I mean, I'm coming into this, I wasn't here in October, obviously, when this was decided. But I feel like we have an advantage now to say, hey, let's, you know, we can focus on this. And I hear us all agreeing in the sense that people drive too fast. But, but I do think that sidewalks are a net plus, whether you do all of them, some of them. But that's something I feel like we can talk about.
Well, I mean, I think you bring up an interesting point. And, you know, and I, Mr. Nesbit's not here tonight, but, you know, in walking some places in the village, there would be big implications for homeowners if sidewalks are installed that are ADA compliant because there's just not a lot of real estate in some places in the village, which is, I think, conversations we need to have before we rubber stamp sidewalks. I mean, it doesn't take much of a drive through the village to realize that a lot of the homes are not very far off the road. And so, you're either talking about making a one-way road or not having them be ADA compliant. There's just, there's just no room to work with. Which is, that is a very large conversation to have. I think when you look at affecting behavior and you're saying, well, if we do this, then people will do this. Well, maybe. Because I read about the walkways across 211, but what if, what if people don't stop?
Well, I believe that if we put the RFB, it will allow us to bring it down to 25. And if we don't, VDOT has said they won't. Now, where we put that, I think, is a huge discussion. And you're right, in the sense that we're not rubber stamping anything.
Right.
That's not happening.
I mean, we can put up signs, but people have been driving that way their whole life. And what if people don't slow down? I think there's a big component of enforcement here that we need to discuss. And really, I think we need to reach out to our sheriff's department and ask her if there are other patrol options for both Flint Hill and for Sperryville. And if it's a matter of funding, I think we need to figure out ways to make that happen. Because really, it's so bad on 211 now and on Main Street as well.
So, my suggestion was actually sort of like, when they close this, this is it. This will be the work product again. So, if we have suggestions, today, I feel, is the date to do that. They're done, it's a grant-funded study, didn't run through the county, this is it. So, I'm just thinking, if we want to have them look, change, add anything, now's the time to do it.
What, what will we ask them to do?
I don't know.
I would suggest at a fair minimum that you craft a statement relative to the overall process and the fact that...
... accommodations that are compatible with that sort of area.
Well, this, this study and this pot of funds is specifically for rural localities to do this kind of review.
But are they picturesque, Gary?
I suppose they could shake the RFB lights as a flower or something, I don't know.
And their, their August 8th or whatever deadline is specific to the grant?
That's specific to the grant. We could, we could engage tool design afterwards. And they've told us that they're not going to freeze us out, but that's when they stop getting paid by the state, which is already a month extension.
To me, what I've heard...
And the 8th might not be the right number, it's somewhere around there.
Somewhere in there. For me, and at least in the Wakefield district, Flint Hill, we're consistent, right? The speed is the issue. Being concerned about sitting at a table next to 522, if you think it's bad, come over to Skyward and try to have a conversation in the morning, it's crazy. So, I think speed is a consistent issue, one that we can all agree, something needs to happen. Enforcement is big, and I don't know. Definitely need to get the sheriff involved because she's only got so many deputies and they run radar a lot, but it doesn't seem to be slowing folks down necessarily in Flint Hill, anyway. Sidewalks, certain areas, people are really excited to have sidewalks. Other areas, they're like, I don't mind walking on dirt. I've done it for all my life, dirt's fine. The crosswalks, I think, in Flint Hill, anyway, would help some. I would love to be able to get people safely across the road and at least give the driver something to go, oh, this is different. It's a crosswalk. Whether they pay attention to it or not is another thing. But I do believe there's a visual there that you don't necessarily see if it's not there when somebody is trying to cross from the left side to the right, vice versa. So, I would like sidewalks, I mean, the crosswalks, I think, are a safety and hopefully will slow people down. I heard from multiple folks, they don't like the three-way stop idea at Crest Hill.
And VDOT took most references to that out in the 28th.
Okay.
Through their comments that led to the 28th report.
But what I did hear was that turn is very difficult, especially if you've got horse trailer or somebody already on Crest Hill trying to turn on the 522 and somebody on 522 trying to turn on Crest Hill right there between Skyward and Truist. It's very tight. And I'm wondering how difficult it would be for Truist to give up a little bit more grass and not have to cut it and give us more room at that turn. Would definitely think that would make sense. Bottom line, if we don't do anything, I don't see this getting any better. And I really don't want to be here talking about someone that's been injured because we did nothing. So, next steps would be wonderful to know. Happy to engage, I'm sure you are as well, and do some meetings with people at the fire department or whatever, just to get more feedback. But I don't want to do nothing in Flint Hill, anyway.
Well, it's not unheard of. The county has done joint meetings at the firehouses. So, I mean, with five magisterial districts in Flint Hill and Chester Gap being two different ones, you may have to have six meetings. It's not unheard of.
Since Patrick's on the call, should we ask him for any insight, input? Mr. Moni, do you have anything to add after hearing all the conversation?
Just making sure you can hear me, Chair Donkey.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I could, and I appreciate the opportunity for yourself, the chair, members of the board. I did want to speak to Supervisor Smith's question about sort of the process and the methodology that was used. Just very briefly, in my opinion, the methodology that the tool design used was, you know, some initial feedback from county staff as well as regional commission staff, just in terms of here's what we've heard in terms of some of the needs, both in Flint Hill and Sperryville. And the majority of the work that they completed was really through a field, field visit to those locations. You know, if you actually, the item that's on the screen right now sort of talks through the scope of work and review of available GIS data, which obviously is pretty limited for those areas, mostly consisting of VDOT centerline data and some of the other available state line data sets. And then really, the task that they, you know, completed was, was going through and doing some of their, from that, from those field visits, from aerial photography review, making some, again, sort of planning level conceptual design ideas, designed specifically to address the ideas that we talked about in terms of traffic calming and pedestrian enhancement where it makes sense. The other thing I would say from my perspective is that this is, I think, as Mr. Curry has mentioned, this is really a planning level document that the board is able to, you know, I think the idea of going out to some, some community meetings is a good one. The board is really able to make a decision as to, you know, what role do we plan to report with any of these? Which of the ideas included in this, in this technical memorandum makes sense for the board to prioritize, if any of the items included there? And so, that's sort of an ongoing process. I think, I agree with what's been stated, that the compressed timeframe that's put in place on the special assistance made it difficult for the public outreach process to occur. But I don't think that prevents the board, county staff, as well as commission staff, if that's their desire for you to work with us, to continue that public engagement beyond the distribution of this, the final branding, which will come after that August date, date that Mr. Curry mentioned. So, I think it's sort of the, it gives a starting point. It does some, some planning work, put some planning work in place that wasn't there previously, that I think has been, has been talked about for a long time in both of the villages.
Mr. Moni, Christine Smith, if I may, Madam Chairman. I know a lot of the initial project, the initial gateway project, was designed for flood prevention in the village. And was there any technical attention paid to that in drafting these documents?
Not that I'm aware of. And certainly, I'll offer Mr. Curry the chance to correct me if I'm wrong. What I, what I would say in terms of, you know, flood prevention and things of that nature is that when you're talking about future funding sources, that's a potential beyond the transportation alternatives program that was mentioned previously, because there would be co-benefits related potentially to some of the improvements there. I don't think, other than probably looking at where the flood plain, you know, boundaries are delineated in both Sperryville and, if there are any in Flint Hill, I don't think that was something that they looked at specifically.
Thank you.
The only reason the, the bridge and the bridge pier came up is because I said, that's a great reason to get rid of this bridge.
Wow, maybe.
Replace the bridge, sorry. Because when, when VDOT replaces a bridge, they have to come to us and ask if we want pedestrian accommodations provided on those bridges. And we've gone through this a couple of times. And so, then we wouldn't have to pay for it.
So, the sources of input again for the study, could you just recap them one more time for me, Mr. Moni?
Sure, I'm happy to. The, I think the primary sources, if you spoke to Megan Atul, who's the project lead, came from their, their field visits, which I believe were completed in April, if I'm not mistaken. They did Flint Hill and Sperryville. At the same time, did some, some field visits, took some, you know, obviously some notes, some pictures, some evidence that they collected just to give them a sense of what it looked like currently on the ground. They also use, you know, available GIS data, which frankly is mostly state level, like VDOT road centerline, probably some edge pavements and intersection data along with existing crash data and things of that nature. And then really, from there, I think probably had, you know, conversations with Mr. Curry. I don't know if there's anyone else from county staff. Spoke with myself and one other staff member from the commission, who's no longer with our office, just to kind of get a sense of, you know, what we had seen in sort of the existing background and existing conditions.
And they were supposed to dialogue with VDOT and receive input from VDOT, but it might appear that didn't happen till the very end.
So, suggestions on next steps?
Speed displays, increase enforcement, or at least increase patrols. And again, that's a dialogue with the sheriff and possibly a funding discussion there as well.
Well, I've mentioned it before and I've seen it in an operation, it can park an empty cruiser, and that will get a lot of people to slow down. The regulars that use that road will then have to gamble, is today an empty cruiser that's a dummy, or is it a real one sitting there? But the out-of-towners, I was talking to a state trooper, none that anybody here would know, and he says, whenever he sees a cruiser, even if he's in his cruiser, he automatically hits his brake pedal, then checks his speed. So, I mean, when you, it's, it's kind of drilled in you, as Mr. Sisley said, if you think you're going to get the penalty, it makes a difference. So, you see a cruiser, you hit your brake, then you check your speed. Unless you had it on cruise or something, but, I mean, it's just, it's just a reflex action. And Falkir did it for years, they would park empty cruisers around with some dummy or something sitting in it. And again, you had to take the gamble, is it a real one today, or is it a dummy again today? But people coming through, you know, tourists, they see a cruiser, they hit the brakes.
I did have someone ask about the additional $200 for speeding added to the sign. I don't know if we can check into...
Yeah, there are some specific requirements on where that can be placed and where it can't. And it's a process, you have to ask the state to do it. And it's just like the speed display signs, there's various metrics you have to meet in order to put those up. And the extra $200 does flow into the local coffers, but I think that's secondary.
If a deputy gives a ticket.
Really the, what's that?
If a deputy gives a ticket, because if a state trooper gives a ticket, it goes to the state.
Under the local ordinance, yeah.
I mean, I'd like for Sperryville and Flint Hill to have the same kind of reputation that Woodville has.
Yeah, and I don't think you can put those $200 fines on a primary highway like in Flint Hill or Woodville, maybe on Main Street in Sperryville.
Amosville, we have them shooting radar a lot, but the problem is it doesn't seem to slow them down. It's almost as if they've memorized the times or something. I've had them pass me on the left with my left-hand turn signal on just before I start making my turn, mostly in my tractor, but in my truck also. They, they don't care. Again, as long as they give stupid people driver's licenses, we're going to have meetings like this.
Well, and, you know, Mr. Curry and I received some video from Elizabeth Melson off the grid. And I, I know we've talked to them, and, you know, we took that as high as we could with VDOT regarding their passing lane and their speed limit. And it's chilly, it's chilling to watch someone pass her as she's attempting to turn into her place of business. And, you know, she had her whole family with her, and they just happened to have the camera positioned to catch the whole thing. We can put up every sign in the world, that doesn't mean that people are going to change their behavior.
So, we've got the deadline of the 8th or whatever, to finalize whatever we send back to them. Is that something you, pitching that back to you, or how do you...
Well, if you're okay with me just crafting a general statement to place in the report, acknowledging receipt and explaining that there wasn't really enough time to gain adequate community feedback to vet the recommendations, I'm happy to do that. And then the document will serve its future purpose of framing future conversations and framing probably targeted conversations in Flint Hill and Sperryville with focus...
It's, it's hard to drive down the road. I mean, when you're, you're doing a speed limit and people are trying to do 20 miles over the speed limit, it's difficult. Everybody's got the same issues.
I will say that, as I informed the board, we did apply for a grant for, to attempt to fund RSROs. And it's a non-planning clause. So, if we're successful in that, then we will free up funding to hire additional patrol deputies, which could, you know, with coordinated efforts between the board and the sheriff, maybe you could come to some conclusion on where they would be best allocated. And a lot of ifs in that, a series of ifs, but, you know, it's an opportunity.
Well, I mean, I feel strongly enough about it that I think we should consider using some monies from our contingency fund. Of course, it's a matter of how much and where does it come from. But if more patrols are needed, I think that's a conversation we need to have and we need to figure out the money.
Definitely a conversation for the sheriff. It's passing limitations as well. We do receive some DMV grants for targeted enforcement, which is a lot of what you see. Deputies out just doing speed patrols. A bunch of people have to sign up.
Is that a possibility for ARPA funds, because it's general government matters?
Because we've, we've got less than $10 million, we can pretty much use it for anything now, the way they changed the rules.
We've pretty much run out of ARPA funds unless we get some more.
No, there's, we're not, I don't believe we're going to get any more and there are, there's funding left.
Not much, we allocated quite a bit for the all points thing.
I guess it depends on what you call that much. Not much compared to 1.4 million, but much compared to hundreds of thousands of dollars.
So, I personally would be interested in the listening tour, or whatever you want to call it.
Well, to follow up on it, though, ARPA funds were for infrastructure... To follow up on it though, ARPA funds were for infrastructure and what you're talking about spending on salaries, it's not quite the same thing in the long term. If we're going to, if we're going to build some of this stuff, maybe ARPA funds would work for that. But that would be ARPA funds not used in another area. But the problem is, if you've got reoccurring expenses, you wouldn't use one-time ARPA funds.
If you used it, you'd do it knowing full well that either the money's going to run out and you have to replace it or the service is going to stop.
Right.
We only run to, what, 2026?
Well, the money, I would separate your thought from the money, because we receive less than $10 million, literally you can use it for anything. I mean practically, general services, general government services, so that's not a concern. It's just the continuing obligation.
What's the best way for us to reach out to the sheriff? Because I would think having a deputy or someone at the meetings would be beneficial, someone that could speak.
We can, we can ask her to attend the next meeting.
Yeah, or, I mean, I think she would receive, I can't speak for her, but I think she would receive conversation from the supervisor from that district in her office better than being held to account at a microphone.
I'm not trying to hold her accountable, but I mean, then we're going back to what we talked about earlier.
I understand.
Today, we have one supervisor talking to a constitutional officer about what we want to see and it's not an official board action.
You can ask her to come to a meeting too.
Do you have any concern if Ms. Smith and I went in that with the sheriff?
I would ask the board to empower us to meet with the sheriff for the purposes of reporting back to the board.
Well, that, that's a little different than one or two members just having a meeting with her.
And neither of you are on, only one of you is on public safety.
I counted, I counted to three several ways and we were all clear.
Maybe a great way to get the conversation going. And before, to Ms. Smith's point, before October, before the roads are jam-packed with lots of cars.
Well, and VDOT indicated earlier today that they would be willing to supply the-
Trailer.
The trailer.
They did, yeah.
Displays. And, and I know they do that as much as they can and they are much appreciated. But sometimes they need them for events in other places too. So we really need to get our own.
Yeah, if you need a motion to, to do that, then I'll make the motion that the board authorizes the chair and Ms. Smith to meet with the sheriff to have this discussion, to initiate it and to report back to the board with suggestions or options that the sheriff proposes.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion to empower you to write the thoughts for-
Motion's always in order. I mean, what, what can't happen is that you can't say, you write a paragraph and send it to us and we'll let you know it's okay. All right. But I think I get the gist of what the feeling is.
I thought the summation you provided earlier was very succinct and appropriate, so I would empower you, I would, I would make a motion that we empower you to write a letter back to the consultants giving our feedback on the report.
I'll second.
All right. Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Did I get on this public hearing?
And it is 850 million and now 1.4 billion. So I did find a piece of paper.
That's a lot of money.
Thank you.
Nationwide.
All right, now we're going to public comment. Because you're all still here, we're going to have public comment. Anybody wishing to speak, please be recognized, same drill, come up and give us your district and your name and this is about anything.
Still with respect to this report.
Joel Kress, Piedmont District. I was just wondering, I heard a gentleman share with us that flood abatement was not part of this report. And I can understand that because the, the communities would benefit in other ways from just traffic improvements. But I was wondering, as I was looking at, let's just take it in front of our house, Route 211, half a mile worth of sidewalk, from .7 to 2.2 million dollars. Would that include storm drain, water? That's not flood abatement. That's actual water runoff and handling that if you have curbed sidewalks. Everyone seems to be against the pebble paver concept going through Sperryville right now down Main Street. So if we're going to have some kind of curbed sidewalks, there's quite a bit of sewer water runoff handling of that since we're going to runoff heading toward Chesapeake Bay. So I'm concerned about the environmental concerns that's going to be involved with new sidewalks. Main Street has at least some form of storm sewer in Sperryville. But there's a lot of new space here we're talking about that's going to involve a lot of, of costs. And I personally would see 2.2 million dollars for a half-mile sidewalk be rather low if you have to dig up and put in and install all that water handling. So that would be a major concern. It would have to be studied, I, I think, and considered. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Tac Tackaleski, Sperryville. Since you're going to be meeting with the sheriff, I would like to ask that you also consider talking about the, having the sheriff's deputies aware of the rules for cars and how close they can be to bikes and I imagine to tractors. I think the, the same rule is that a car has to give at least three feet of space and quite frequently that doesn't happen and that is also an issue for safety. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Rick LaSarge, Piedmont District. I agree with the gentleman about stormwater, that that's an issue along Main Street. Also, in many places where the sidewalk is proposed, there is, the sewer is below that sidewalk. So that needs to be coordinated so that they don't, if they ever have to pull the sewer up and the lines up in the road or underneath the sidewalk, that they take some responsibility. VDOT, if they're going to put a sidewalk over top of a sewer, that they take responsibility for.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
Great box, Sperryville. I'd like to follow up on Mr. Frazier's comment about the police car being at the track, you know, a speak about calming device. On Long Island, there's a community I used to be involved with. And what they had did, they had this patrolman named Manny, which was really a mannequin. And what they would do is put him in a cruiser that wasn't being used that day and park it somewhere. And it was a very effective way of slowing traffic down.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Scott McBride, Piedmont. There was a mention of creating a special tax district so that only the people or the businesses in Sperryville would finance these improvements. And then subsequently Christine mentioned the meals and lodging tax. And it got me to thinking that, well, if, if the folks in Chester Gap and Amesville don't really care about what goes on in Sperryville, so they don't want to pay for it, wouldn't it make sense then that, that the meals and lodging taxes that are generated in Sperryville be reserved for exclusive expenditure solely on Sperryville?
Well, we don't typically let public comment be a question and answer period. That's been the history of the board. But I'm happy to respond to your question, which is that there have been lots of special projects in other districts where I thought there should be a tax district and my peers didn't agree. It's very, very hard to say all this money came from this space and to only account for it that way and to only spend it there. And that's not been the tradition of the county.
Not recently.
If, if we're going to start looking at, at that for this, it's going to get very messy very fast.
Anybody else? Public comment? All right, Zoom world, anybody left in Zoom world that would like to speak during public comment? Not seeing anybody in Zoom world. All closed public comment. 8:42.
Actually, in the past, that's how the county board, when we took care of the roads, let's say we are predecessors of pre-BIRD Act, they did have levies that they levied on, like Wakefield District to build 522 or, or whatever. So it's not unheard of in this county. It just hasn't been done in our time.
I mean, in my time on the board, I, I think particularly we either built out of Chester Gap.
I understand.
And, and, you know, I, I proposed that and I think you agreed and it didn't fly. So, and staff seemed to think it was cumbersome to break out only supplying based on the revenue from that district. So if we're going to start doing that, we need to start doing it on several things.
Yeah, if we're putting in infrastructure though, I mean, that's the thing about building a new school. We usually finance it for 20 years and we build one that lasts, what, since Thomas Jefferson, I think, was president.
He may have found a school there.
He may have. But, I mean, that, that's just, you know, that's, that's kind of normal procedure. It, it does happen. And the, the argument was that if, you know, the Sperryville crew runs a call in Little Washington, well, then that throws your text plan out the window and it might. So there is some, some traction to that argument. But there's not much traction in the argument that people from Chester Gap and Amesville are going to be walking around in Sperryville. There's just no point in it.
Sperry Fest.
I don't know anybody who went to Sperry Fest.
I did.
No, Chuck said he did. You did? That's two people. You, three people. But I, you were there.
Yeah, he was there.
But you don't live in Amesville.
No, I don't.
And I don't think anybody from Chester Gap went. Maybe they did. So the, I mean, there's, there's reasoning behind it and, you know, also if the people feel that they have to pay for it, even though it might take 10 or 20 years, they might be a little less excited to ask for things. There's, there's always that. That's a, that's a disincentive to want government involved in your front yard.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thought you were going to make a motion to create a special tax district.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.